Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to call our meeting order to order for January fourteenth here at City Council. And Happy New Year to everyone out there that we haven't had a chance to say that yet. So first meeting in the new year, it's always good. Marcel Roy is away this evening, that's why you're strapped with me here, sitting in this chair. And so we'll see how things go with this. I'd like to welcome Megan tonight, she's our junior council representative for Conference High School. So welcome, Megan, and please feel free to take part in any discussions you want to. We have all had the minutes brought for us for circulation. Are there any errors or omissions from the minutes from December seventeenth, meeting two thousand and eighteen? If not, then could I have a motion to pass the minutes as presented?
I'll move that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Mickel. Add a second, or please.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Counselor Chessel. All in favor? That is carried. Any additions this evening from management, city office?
No additions tonight.
From council? Any additions? Well, that makes it easy. We'll carry on, and there are no public hearings or notices, and no delegations this evening, and no reports on standing committees. So we'll get right into the consent agendas for taxation, cash, and all the reports that are involved there. So do we have a motion for that, please?
I'd like to make the motion that all items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
A second, or please.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you. Any discussion on any of this, council? If not, all in favor, please. And that is carried unanimously. And I need to flip the page. On motions on accounts payable, please.
Your Worship, I'll make a motion that purchases in the amount of three million six hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents from December fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to January tenth, two thousand and nineteen, be passed for payment.
Thank you. A second, or please.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you. Brad. Any questions concerning accounts? If not, all in favor? And that is carried unanimously. On boards and committee, and I'll ask Matthew to speak on this, please.
Yes, Your Worship, so up on the board, we actually have a list of people that we'd like to appoint to our two thousand and nineteen boards and committees. So what we did is through council, Mayor Roy appointed members to all the different boards, made some changes of some of the council members, and then we also have a lot of the longstanding people on our current boards. So what's going to happen is after approval tonight, these boards and committees will be listed on our city website for people to be aware of. If at any time, anyone from the public is wanting to join a board or committee, please contact the city administration, so myself, or City Clerk, Richter, and we can get you a form to put your name down for a committee. And so what we do is we keep all that information on file, and when member at large positions come available at that time.
Okay, thank you. And just for the public to know that about every two years, many of us get turned around or switched around into different boards that bring new ideas to that committee, and so there's been a little bit of movement of that, not always, but we have seen that here. Are we needing a motion for that, then? Thank you, Danette. Does someone have a motion for that? Acceptance of the committees?
Your Worship, I'd make a motion that the list of individuals on the document provided be and are hereby appointed to boards and committees on behalf of the City of Weyburn for the year two thousand and nineteen, for the terms stated.
A second, or please.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Chessel. Any questions on there, or did we get everything right now? I think everything's correct from where we had. All in favor? Thank you, that's passed unanimously. And go to work now. We've got some new ones to be represented on, and it's always exciting. Going on to FCM, membership invoice, activated fund, and Matthew, please, speak on that.
Yes, Your Worship, once again, we received our membership invoice from Federation of Canadian Municipalities. So what they're looking for is our base fees, and they're also asking for an advocacy contribution, which is voluntary, in the past, that has not been approved by council, and that's a recommendation back to you guys again, that it's up to your choice, if you guys want to do that or not. But we are wanting to look at the membership again for FCM.
Thank you. If I remember correctly, there was the membership, but there was an additional asking for funds before, and I believe we've denied that previous amount of money, for whatever reason. And so that's what they're asking for, is the regular or the addition part?
They're asking for both within that. So what they're asking for is the regular fee, and then additional, a thousand dollars, plus GST, which is a thousand and fifty for advocacy.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor, then?
Yes, we do, Your Worship.
Thank you.
I'll move that the additional fee from Federation of Canadian Municipalities for outstanding advocacy fund contribution in the amount of one thousand and fifty dollars for two thousand and nineteen be approved.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Counselor Van Vetje, please.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I believe the reason that we denied it last year, and probably also again this year, is we already pay for advocacy, and this is just an additional money, and we thought it was kind of like double dipping, so to speak. The larger centers can afford to pay it, I think, much better than we can, and we're already paying for this advocacy, and I think it was even brought up last year, that little disappointed that they didn't do a better job on advocating for us as far as the per diem and the tax situation was concerned with council members, and very poor information passed along from that end, and also, so I think we're justified in denying this, or not paying this voluntary payment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor?
Thanks, Your Worship, I would just want to echo a lot of what Counselor Van Vetje said, and good to go further in that in their letter in here, asking for the, you know, again, I agree with paying the membership a hundred percent, but in the advocacy fund, they talk about securing the moment, or seizing the moment, securing our future, there's an election this year, and nothing in the document about what it is they're going to be advocating for. So to me, this is a very hard thing to support as well.
Yeah, and I think that was brought up last year also, that the extra money was not defined for something, and again, we probably see that, so. Anything else from anyone else? Then I'll call the question. All in favor? Those opposed?
Yeah, this, that, this was the regular fee.
No, no, actually, this motion, yeah.
That thousand and fifty?
Yeah.
Sorry, so.
Yeah, this approved the regular fee plus the, not plus?
It's not the thousand and fifty.
Just the thousand and fifty. My misunderstanding?
This motion is just for the extra. The regular is automatically paid out of our budget.
So this is just for the extra? Okay, just for council understands that, then? Okay, so this is just for the extra portion? So then I will call the table again. All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you.
Let's go to the rest of the three.
Yeah. No, we won't do that. It's, I thought it was a joint thing, and so, and my apologies for that. Thank you. Introduction of bylaws. Rezoning Bylaw two zero five zero, Miller Road, and I would call on Amanda, please, to...
We received a request to rezone. We received a request to rezone two thousand and fifty Miller Road, Proposed Parcel G, which is in the process of being subdivided, from urban holding to highway commercial, from Waitera Developments. The rezoning is required to accommodate the future development of office for administration, sales, or general business. Current zoning for this site is urban holding, which is designed to protect lands required for future development, and to provide an orderly transition of agricultural land to other uses, as well as to ensure the future development is compatible with the local land uses and policies. As per the official community plan, highway commercial lands are typically used for businesses, which require strong benefit from highway access. Also, this site is located in Burnway Place subdivision, is bounded by Sixteenth Street and Highway thirteen, which serves as a residential neighborhood with highway commercial land adjacent to Highway thirteen. Public advertisement has been in the paper for the first two weeks of December. Further public advertisement in the local paper will occur on January sixteenth and twenty-third, as well notices were placed on the city website and posted at City Hall. Notice was also sent to the Planning District Commission for review. Staff recommends that council give first reading to the zoning bylaw two thousand and nineteen, three three nine five, to rezone two thousand and fifty Miller Road from UH to HC.
Thank you. Can I have the motion, please?
Yes, Your Worship, I'm prepared to make a motion to the bylaw two thousand and nineteen, three three nine five, to amend bylaw two thousand and three, two zero nine nine. The city zoning bylaw for the purpose of rezoning two thousand and fifty Miller Road from urban holdings to highway commercial to accommodate future development, be read at first time.
A second, or please.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Chessel. Now, my understanding, Danette, that this is his first reading tonight, and Amanda, thank you. Any questions from council? If not, all in favor? That is passed unanimously. Thank you, Amanda. Rezoning Bylaw four ten, Government Road South, and again, Amanda, please.
I have received a request to rezone four ten Government Road Southeast, Lot three, Block eight, Plan zero eight eight eight, from R two Residential to SC Service Commercial, for Vortex Plumbing and Heating. The rezoning is requested to accommodate the conversion of a single-family dwelling into an office for administration and plumbing shop, which is permitted in the SC zone. Current zoning of the site is R two, which permits semi-detached dwellings, as well as uses permitted in R one, while recognizing the demand for conversion of older, larger, detached dwellings into rental. It is designed to conserve the general characteristic of an established neighborhood. As per the official community plan, the site is located in South Hill Residential subdivision, which has only intended uses for residential development, with lots of potential for improvement. There are a few highway commercial developments existing in the subdivision between Sixth Avenue Southeast and Seventh Avenue Southeast. Located in the middle of residential neighborhoods, as well, there are commercial developments along Highway thirty-five in the adjacent subdivision on the west side. Although the dwelling is situated in a mature residential neighborhood, there are no neighboring dwellings. There's a cemetery located on the south side up to Sixth Avenue, as well as a church on the north side. And Government Road has commercial properties across the street. Adjacent properties to the west are multifamily units on the four hundred block of Government Road South, and highway commercial developments to the south. Public advertisement has been carried out for the first two weeks of December. Further advertisement in the local paper will occur January sixteenth and twenty-third. Notices were placed on the city website and posted at City Hall, as well as sent to all property owners within seventy-five meters, to offer an opportunity to provide comments, which there have been no issues or concerns brought forward to date. Staff recommends that council give first reading to zoning bylaw two thousand and nineteen, three three nine six, to rezone four ten Government Road South, from R two to SC.
Thank you. Just for clarification, that's the first piece of property to the south of the Ukrainian Catholic Church?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Worship, I would make a motion that bylaw two thousand and nineteen dash thirty-three ninety-six, to amend bylaw two thousand and three dash two zero nine nine, the zoning bylaw to rezone four ten Government Road, Lot three, Block eight, Plan zero eight eight eight, from residential to service commercial, for the purpose of converting a single-family dwelling into an office for administration and a plumbing shop, be read at first time.
And a second, or please.
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you, carried unanimously. Thank you, Amanda. Is there any unfinished business that we haven't taken care of? I think we're good there. And I want to thank Mayor Roy for being away tonight, when our budget for two thousand and nineteen is to be delivered, and, but we have that in capable hands with Laura. So at this time, I would ask Laura to make her presentation on two thousand and nineteen budget for the City of Weyburn.
Thank you. All right, our two thousand and nineteen budget. So our approach has been to just, to balance the City of Weyburn rate pair's interest, and continue to grow within the city. We want to provide a budget that enables the growth in all departments, and deliver what council wants in the future. So I'm just going to go through first, and I'll highlight what we did last year. So in two thousand and eighteen, within administration, we had, we upgraded City Hall, the reception area, we installed Pyroptics, the Infinet, in all, all the facilities. We had advancements in our public relations and safety departments. Grants were obtained and distributed out to Transit for Disabled, and we also provide the Nickel Lake Board with a grant. Police, they have purchased new patrol vehicles, they upgraded the front counter of the police station. Fire has purchased a new pumper truck, and they refinished the truck bay floors. The leisure and facilities, they started planning on the new proposed WRCC, the Weyburn Recreation and Culture Center, and they started also planning for a new proposed fleet storage facility. Leisure yearly provides funding towards Southeast Regional Library, and also towards the public library, their operations and facility maintenance. And they also provide many SAS lotteries to, or they apply for SAS lotteries, and they provide funding to local organizations. Engineering and planning, they put up new lights on Second Street, and they worked on Government Road and Fifth Avenue Water Main replacement. The Fleet Department purchased a new road grader tractor and street sweeper. And in utilities, the water treatment plant, they started the work on the new reservoir. They, we had a water meter replacement throughout the whole city, and lead line replacement, and they also worked on the lagoon dredging. So for two thousand and nineteen, our highlights that we've budgeted for, and within administration, it's some IT server upgrades. The city pension is being transferred over to MAP Pension Plan. We've continued to get grants for the Transit for Disabled, and as well give a grant to the Nickel Lake Board, and we're providing asbestos studies to all city buildings. Within police, they proposed to purchase a new patrol vehicle, they've implemented a new CSO position, and they have some upgrades to their building as well. Fire has replacement of some ground radios. Leisure and facilities, has proposed to replace the outdoor pool liner, proposed construction to start on the WRCC building, continue with planning for a new fleet storage facility. They continue to provide funding to the Southeast Regional Library, they will provide, they also provide funding to the public library, and they'll continue with their SAS lottery grants that they provide to local organizations. Within engineering, we've started the planning and initial phases for some new city entrance signs. They've started to work on launching a new asset management project, to make sure that all of our infrastructure is up to date, and the development of an official community plan is in the works. Public Works and Parks, the River Park entrance feature, that's being carried over from last year, since it was not completed in two thousand and eighteen. They've budgeted to do some city parking lot revitalization, and to replace a salt and sand shed that's in the Works Yard. They will continue on the Government Road asphalt, Sims Avenue, and Sixteenth Street, to get that completed, and Murgan Street, the Water Main replacement. Within Fleet, they have four main purchases they've outlined. A front-end loader, a welding truck, tree and brush chipper, and a new refuse truck. And within utilities, the reservoir is scheduled to be completed in the spring, and Phase One of the landfill redevelopment project is budgeted to be started. So overall, administration has seen a four point five percent increase, police three point eight seven, fire is at five point six three, leisure ten point seven. Engineering has seen a decrease of nine point three nine. Planning is increased by twenty-eight point two percent, and Works and Parks by one point three percent. The main increase in administration is due to additional, additional funds going to the reserve for future local improvements. Police was mostly due to wage increases, and, number three, what's that? Oh, leisure was due to the facility repairs. So the percentage increases, they aren't always like, you can see, fire, they had a five point six percent increase, and it's only fifty-two thousand, opposed to police is three point eight seven, and it's one hundred and eight. That's just due to, because they have a smaller budget than police, so it depends on how large the budget is for that department, what their percentage increases. So the net operating budget, just taking into account government grants or tax revenue, is ten point four million. Our total operating budget, that includes utilities, is at twenty-six point six million, and our capital is nine point one. So with the increase, our overall, our increase in the budget worked out to three point eight one percent, and that, a portion of this is in base tax, so base tax is, that includes police, fire, and snow removal services. So how it's calculated is we take the expense for each of those, divided by the amount of properties in the community, which is four, four thousand two hundred and twenty-six. The percentage of the residential and condos on that levy is sixty-one percent, and then it calculates down to be, based on what the fires budget, police budget, fire, snow, and sanding expenses were, that worked out to be an increase, or to be, have a base tax of six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. So we round that down to six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Last year, it was at six hundred dollars, and I believe it's been like that for a couple of years. So if you calculate out on a residential property, the average, average residential property in the city is what, three hundred thousand? They're taxed at eighty percent, so they would be, it's at two hundred and forty thousand. They, with the increase in mail rates, their taxes will be seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. We've left the provincial education tax the same, since we don't have their rates yet, and base tax will go up twenty-five dollars to six hundred and twenty-five, and then we have the hundred and forty, the hospital levy. So that works out to a total of two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents, and that's an increase of fifty dollars and fifty cents. So overall, that works out to a three point eight one percent increase on taxes for the average person. In this case, the base tax would be an increase of twenty-five dollars, and the municipal tax is an increase of twenty-five dollars. So it's a fifty-fifty split. If your assessment is higher than that, you will have, your taxes will go up more on the municipal tax, but your base tax will stay the same at twenty-five dollars. So it won't be a fifty-fifty split, and if your, if your taxes, or if your assessment is lower, then your base tax increase would be higher than your municipal tax. So we always get the question of where our tax dollars are spent. So based on the average of a three hundred thousand dollar assessment, that's taxed at two hundred and forty thousand in the year, oh, sorry, that should say two thousand and nineteen. Police, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars would go towards police, one hundred and twenty-eight to fire, three hundred and thirty to leisure, engineering would be thirty-five dollars, planning thirty-one, and four hundred and fifty-eight towards Works and Parks, to make out the one thousand three hundred and sixty. So this only includes the municipal tax and the base tax. It does not include what was up here in provincial and the hospital levy, because we don't keep those portions. It's just the seven hundred and thirty-four and the six hundred and twenty-five. So overall, the per, your, oh, this isn't supposed to say per month, this should be per year. So your taxes would go up a hundred and, oh, no, sorry, it is per month. So your taxes, your thirteen hundred and sixty dollars per month would be a hundred and thirty-three, one thousand three hundred and sixty per year, a hundred and thirteen per month, is what goes towards each of these, and so it's split out per month. So we've compared to other cities, I've only been given two thousand and seventeen data, the eighteen isn't out yet, so I use that data to just compare us to where we sit. We, our mail rate in two thousand and seventeen was six point seven five, last year it was six point seven seven, we're proposing it to be seven point zero four this year. So the average is nine point two nine, so we're quite a bit below the average, we're the third lowest in the province, and so I don't suspect, usually the mail rate's not going down, it's going up, so the others would be going up as well, so we're sitting probably about the same as we have been. In two thousand and seventeen, our average residential taxes were two thousand six hundred and fifty-eight, based on this information, or, and so ours were two thousand and thirty-two. For that same property in two thousand and eighteen, it was two thousand and forty-one, and in two thousand and nineteen, we proposed it to be two thousand and eighty-six, so it would go up about forty bucks. So you can see here, we're still in the bottom. We, even going up by fifty dollars from two thousand and seventeen, we're still below what the one mooshaw which was next to us was at in two thousand and seventeen. And then they provide a residential versus commercial, so if you take a residence at two hundred thousand dollar assessment, and a commercial at two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars assessment, the Weyburns would be one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three for the residence, and the commercial would be three thousand three hundred and fifty-three. And so I calculated it out, so the commercial would be thirty-four hundred and six dollars, and proposed to be thirty-four eighty-eight for the commercial. The average is one point nine six of commercial to residential, and in two thousand and seventeen, we were sitting at one point eight. So we're about the middle of the row. So that just means our commercial is one point eight higher than our residential. So in summary, we have a proposed three point eight one percent increase across all property taxes, property classes. This will provide a high-level service to the city, citizens of Weyburn, and we're hoping we can reduce some of the infrastructure gap and continue on with building our city.
Thank you, Laura. First of all, I'd like to commend yourself, our city management, and all our division heads for having this ready for us at this time of the year. Very impressive. It came to council, this budget has come to council way back in November, I think, was the first proposal to it. So for our citizens out there, this is something that does take three to four months to put together usually, and I think I would just like to compliment all those involved in it, in their efforts to maintain this, or put this budget together for us at this spot. Now, there was a lot of numbers, there's a lot of things in here that are highlighting, and I just know there's a whole swath of questions from council members, so I will open the floor to council right now, to put her on the hot seat there, Counselor Mickel.
Thank you, Worship. Laura, you did a very good presentation. I had a number of questions, but you answered most of them. But the one I want to make sure that the citizens of Weyburn are aware of, the calculation of the base tax of twenty-five dollars is included in your three is included in your 3.81% increase. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
The other question I have, and I hope I'm not going offside on this one, but you mentioned the hospital levy of $140 will be on our 2019 taxes. When is that going to be the last time that'll appear?
I believe it's, is it 2021 or, yes, 2021.
It was a 10-year, me and him, it was a 10-year program, I know that.
Yes, and we will have it completed a year in advance of what was projected.
So by 2020?
2021 will be the last year.
The last time. Again, I thank you very much.
Anyone else? Counselor Richards?
Yeah, I also want to say that I, I'm going to support this. This is very well done, and I know that we have to get, you know, Laura, you touched on it later on, or at the end of your report. A bit of a infrastructure gap that we're refilling, and I can appreciate Nadder's worked very hard as well to try to identify those things, get some good cost to us. I think this is a great budget. I hate to see taxes go up, but I realize sometimes they have to. The only thing I'll comment on for all of us as counselors is that last part, I see our chamber manager staring me down, so I have to comment on this. The ratio of commercial to residential for us currently, 1.96. The chambers have advocated always for that to be about 1.6, so we've got a bit of work to do in trying to-
We're at 1.8.
Oh, sorry, 1.8, right. So we're getting better and we're focusing on that, so I just want to say to the non-residential properties as well, we're working on narrowing that gap. Thank you.
Anyone else? That's way too easy for Laura, guys.
If I can make a comment too, though, I mean, what the public sees tonight is, there's quite a bit of work and effort went into it. We had long meetings and good discussions.
Almost four months.
Because the numbers did not start where they, where we're passing tonight. We have very good dialogue in closed session, and that's common with any city or town or village. It's very simple tonight to have a few comments, but when the report that Laura gave us was so thorough there, it explains a lot of things that were discussed in a closed session. And there were very good meetings and some hotly contested issues. But that is what it is, to bring us down to that number that we're going to pass this evening. So like I said, it may be a very simple conversation tonight, but there was good discussion, and we started in November.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, and I mean, it's inevitable, we've had people comment to me, or the tax is going up, and I said, wait till tonight and you'll find out. But I said, they said, well, house prices have gone down, the economy is down, how do you expect us to absorb more taxation? And I guess my, my feedback to that is, we still have work to do. The work doesn't stop in our community to do the improvements that we need to maintain. The services that we think our citizens expect and deserve cost money. And I think there's a couple of things in, in this budget that people need to know about. The contract for QP was agreed and signed. The fire department was agreeing to sign, and we still have the police we're working on. But those, those increases that they have reflects into, into our budget. And, and even that part of the keeping our people working with us and for us costs money. So, sorry to say so. I'm very pleased personally with what we've seen on, on, on this number. And again, hats off to all of those that are involved. We, we need to go forward. There's some big projects in here again. Sixteenth Street, Government Road, for those improvements that have to be contended with and dealt with. And once they're done, they're gone. This isn't a long-term thing. But let, you know, I'm sure Nadder will tell us there's other ones in the wings waiting to be done. But that's what has to be done to maintain a level of services. Anything else? I rattled on enough. Then I would entertain a motion, please. Who's got that one?
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the budget for 2019 be presented as passed.
I have a second, please.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much, Laura. Well done. Moving on, to request for waiver of fees on 325 Queen Street. I'll call Amanda, and I will excuse myself from the meeting if we're prepared. Richard, I'll call in Counselor Chessel to chair this, please.
Madam, if you could present for us, please.
As per clause 6C3 of the Offsite Development Levy Bylaw, Cindy Ann Bohm has submitted formal request to council's consideration to waive the offsite development levy. The levy was applied to her condition of development permit for new development of a doggy daycare at 325 Queen Street. The offsite development levy, which was applied to her development, was as per clause 6B2, "Proposals involving development or redevelopment of residential, commercial, industrial, or institutional site with site area of less than one acre where no subdivision is occurring or where municipal services are being utilized will pay the development levy as per the classes of development." And as per clause 6B4, "Proposals involving commercial, industrial, institutional additions on buildings older than 2013 shall have offsite development levies applied as per the classes of development." As per the classes of development, I calculated the square footage of the floor planned to be approximately 4,224 square feet with a result of an offsite development levy of $1,562, which was the water system portion of the fees only, at 37 cents a square foot. As that is the only city service being impacted by this development. In determining the increase to this service, I looked at the existing use of the building, which is vacant, and looked at previous year's water usage. In 2015, the water usage was 135 cubic meters. 2016 was 151 cubic meters. 2017 was 17 cubic meters, and in 2018, there was no water usage. Therefore, this proposed development would increase the impact to the water system, and the levy applied would go towards maintaining the infrastructure which processes and distributes the water. After reviewing the file on the water usage on the existing building, I recommend that council deny the request to waive the applied offsite development levy in the amount of $1,562.88.
Do I have a motion?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion, a motion at the request of Cindy Ann Bohm of Fido's Place Doggy Daycare Training Center at 325 Queen Street to have the offsite development levy fees waived be denied.
Seconder?
I'll second it, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor Richards, discussion. Counselor Richards?
Thanks, your worship. I, I struggle with this immensely. I'll be blunt, we've talked about this development levy off and on, off and on. And now we just heard a budget presentation about tens of millions of dollars we need to spend on our infrastructure to keep them up. I kind of, not kind of, I feel like the application here is an unintended, unintended consequence. I don't feel comfortable with this application of the development levy. Like to see us have another look at this. I won't support the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I would agree with Counselor Richards, and him and I were the ones that went bantered back and forth on this, the need for it. But I don't believe this, for some reason, I don't think that the intent was for this minimal increase in water usage. I think it was a substantial increase in water usage, like going from a office building to a car wash where there's thousands of gallons more usage, or a substantial increase in traffic. So I think for some reason, this one doesn't quite hit our target that we were after. So I also feel that her request should be, or her request to have the fees waived should be accepted.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, your worship, like, like, we, we almost took it 11 to 12 months revising this and reorganizing it. And we knew you're going to be challenged because if somebody didn't like it. So are we going back to square one again if this happened? Like, I mean, you set the policies, you set the agenda, you set the rules, and I thought we had to abide by them. I mean, we took almost a year coming up with a plan that we thought would work. And just because it's challenges, that means that our plan is of no value?
I, I don't believe so, Counselor Mickel. I just, I, I don't think this purpose hits our, what we were trying to attain at all. I think it, like, there's very little extra water usage, if, if any, and that was the intent. And I think, for whatever reason, the way the wording was in there, I think our building inspector did the right thing because that's the way it was worded in there, if there was more water usage. But I know when we talked about it additionally, it was excessive water, substantial water. So I, I don't believe this would be fair by any stretch, and I don't think we'll be challenged on it if a similar, you know, similar person came along with the same type of water usage increase. And we would be back, yes, to accepting that also. But I, there's always that oddball one, and we knew we were going to get hit with, with that.
Counselor Mickel?
Counselor Van Betcha and Counselor Richards as well, you two gentlemen worked very hard on this offsite development levy. But in saying that, I mean, if the word excessive is at which point we're going to hang our hat on tonight, then maybe we'll have a look at it. Because if this one isn't excessive, then maybe it, maybe it should have in another dialogue or more meetings and find out. But let's, let's come to a conclusion here about what we want and what we don't want. We don't want the public out there undecided as council's undecided. If excessive means a car wash, then we know where we're at. This is certainly not a car wash. I have to compliment the lady that's trying to do this. She picked one location and we shot that one down, and this is a good location, Cindy. It's a great location. And I hope this doesn't interfere with your business to, to continue. But if we have to have another look to, because we're not back to, back to where we should be, then maybe we should do that. So we can vote this one down.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah, I think, I think the intent of this is in the right place, but I think I'll agree with a lot of the statements. I don't think it was intended to be implemented in a case like this. This is an existing building that has existing service that likely won't put any more strain on the service than previous tenants. I think it does need to be looked at because this is a one-off that we thought we would never have. Well, it's already here and it's only the second week of the year. But I think it's worth looking at. I can't support this. I don't think it's fair to impose a fee like this on an existing building. So I won't be able to support this.
Counselor Richards?
Thanks, your worship. I, I agree. You're right. Amanda did everything that she could. She went through the bylaw, she enforced the bylaw as it's written. Do we need to maybe clean up that language a little bit? Maybe we do, or it's about interpretation. But Amanda followed the bylaw as it's written. We've got to just have another, I guess, a sober second look at this. I kind of agree with what everybody's said. I think we're all on the same page, just didn't come out just right.
Yes, I totally agree, Amanda. You're not torn under the bus. You did your job as you should have. And again, yeah, I think we should revisit.
Are we ready? Called a question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. Just do that once because I can.
He turned the mic off. He's not supposed to do that.
He bent your gavel, too.
Oh, he bent the gavel, too. Whatever. We, we'll leave him in charge next week. There's no notice of motions this evening? Any inquiries or announcements from anyone? Anything from the media? Not right now. Looking pretty good. In that, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.